Hey, very good. I'll call the meeting to order and I'd ask everyone to rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Okay, well then I ask for the initial roll call.
Christie Gaden.
Yeah.
Christie Cook.
Yes.
Christie Campbell. Thomas, yes. Christie Fritz.
Yes.
Christie Dunn.
President.
Christie Honey.
President. None of us are here, so skip 3-2 for remote participation and move on to recess for the public hearing of the combined annual budget appropriation ordinance. Do I have a motion for that recess?
I made that motion.
Wendy has the motion and Pat has the second. Roll call.
Christie Fritz.
Yes.
Christie Cook.
Yes.
Christie Dunn.
Yes.
Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Christie Campbell.
Yes.
Christie Gaden.
Yes.
Christie Honey.
Yes. Question carries. With that, we are open for a public comment on the annual budget appropriation ordinance 22-1014. So is there anyone out there? This public comment is just on the budget and not on any or anything else you have on your mind? Is there anyone out there that would like to comment on the budget?
I see none.
See two guests, but I don't see any hands raised.
Still none. I think we're good.
Hey, thank you. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene to a regular meeting. And as a motion, I'll have the second. You guys are in a good line of sight for me. Roll call, please.
Christie Dunn.
Yeah.
Christie Campbell.
Yes.
Christie Cook.
Yes.
Christie Fritz.
Yes.
Christie Gaden.
Yes.
Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Christie Honey.
Yes. Question carries. We are back to regular session and regular meeting and then that brings us to public comments where you can comment on whatever you'd like. Public pertaining to the conservation issues. Someone out there?
I see no hands. Anyone?
Okay. Brings us to new business, review of regular meeting agenda items for February 22nd. And that's Tuesday meeting. Like bring up that this time. We're good? That'll bring us on to the Hebron Drainage District. Assessment invoice.
All right, so let's see here. Wendy, if you can also share microphone with Ed and since he is on. So we did receive an invoice as in board summary on a special session. But I wanted to hold over, it wasn't something that we were expecting. So our recommendation from staff perspective, and Ed's done a nice review of kind of the history and I'll let him address the board with that. But our recommendation, we've been trying to get a memorandum of understanding with the drainage district in order. It was drafted a while ago, so we'd like to see that happen. Our recommendation is to go ahead and make payments at this point. But obviously getting those memorandum of understandings important going forward because sometimes what, how the assessment is going in that in advance knowing and being involved with that, I think that's important since we are a member of the district. And that's just as important from precedent setting and involvement. Ed, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Elizabeth, do you want me to go over the board summary or does anyone on the board have questions about it? I tried to encapsulate for the board the history of the site from our first acquisitions there in the eighties through the restoration of the site, the installation of the inline tile structures that we currently have on the site. And then the most current issue at the site was related to necessary tile repairs, not on district property. But south of that, I'm happy to either go over that or answer any questions if folks have those. But our recommendation is to pay the assessment. It's a little odd from the conservation district standpoint to be paying for tile repairs that drain wetlands, but in this case, because it's set up in a formal drainage district, that's how the assessments are done. There is a formula that is was is created in the drainage district to act for doing that. So we feel it's important for the district as a member of the drainage district to pay the assessment, but we also feel that it's critical to get down on paper a methodology for future communication and partnership work between our two entities. I think you see from what was shared with you as part of the encapsulated history. When the district installed inline tile structures in 2004 and 2012, we made a concerted effort to try to put together an MOU at that time that would deal with the water management issues related to those inline structures. Unfortunately, we were not successful. I think you kind of have the history there and what was provided to you. And we feel it'll be important to take that up again. We anticipate working with the drainage district into the future. And it would be good to have something on paper that deals with how communication between our two entities would happen. And and what the goals of each entity is, so it's it's down on paper. So that is our recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. And Gabe Powers is also here tonight and he was involved in a lot of the the work at that site. So if I can't field a question, Gabe certainly can.
What I have, I just have a question or a comment. If you put an MOU together, decide if neither side can come to an agreement on what's worded, they may not get signed, then we need to have something put in place within the district that we contact, I think the drainage districts from time to time, maybe twice or something to see what they have planned and at least have a conversation with them because it sounds like there's, or we know there's another one down by Coon Creek that's now you know, acting to use and the talking of a few others. So I think we need a plan as to how we're going to talk to discuss what's going on with each of these and then system in place of anything they're going to do, we run it up the ladder here someplace and somebody signs off on it so that we at least have a dialogue because you may not, you may never come to an agreement on that one. Hopefully you will, but if you don't, you need to at least, we need to have a structure here of how we're going to do that and how we're going to go forward and let these drainage districts know that this is our, our way of doing business and this is what we need to have signed off on. That's, that's my comment. If anybody else has questions or comments, I'd open forth for that.
I might, I might be a little more aggressive. It seems as if we offered them the opportunity to establish a memorandum of understanding a few years ago and reasons that aren't clear to me. They they didn't elect to pursue it. So we're in a position now that our leverage is to delay payment until a clear mechanism to establish a memorandum of understanding. You know, all of these people I'm sure are busy, you know, they have their private enterprises. I mean, we're a public body. We don't gain any income from the land that is being drained. It's just our responsibility to maintain it. So I think that we should consider taking a more aggressive stance, perhaps having our lawyers work with Ed and send them a letter outlining the steps that we think are appropriate. And having them acknowledge the letter and then our payment would be forthcoming. The other question I have is that the bill, the total bill of $52,000 was broken into two parts of $35,000 part and a $17,000 part. Our share of the $35,000 part is based on 120 acres out of a total of 700 that are affected by this tiling. Do we pay the Hebron Drainage District a certain yearly and is that what the other 17,000 will be paid out of? Because some of that 17,000 was allocated to us based on that same proportionate sharing. So.
If I'm, if I'm correct, I think that once they the reestablish the drainage district, it's assessed on the real estate taxes. Drainage district. That's the way I, you know, the way I understood it.
So do we pay a tax? Do I, we know?
The district from our records has not been assessed any tax, so we've not received anything nor have taken. And we did go back and check records. I believe the date that correctly went at least back to 2009, if not even before that, correct?
We did a record search to 2005. Drainage, drainage law in Illinois and drainage district clause is one of the more complicated sets of ordinances in the state. And there are typically a couple of different types of fees. When a drainage district is established, and many of these were established very early on. This one, I believe, was right after the turn of, in the beginning of the 20th century. There is an initial assessment that creates the drainage improvements, the ditches and the tiling. And then there are periodic assessments for maintenance of that. And often drainage districts will go longer periods of time when they aren't necessarily inactive, but there aren't any major repairs to do. So there may not be an assessment. And then when there is work, the drainage district will set based assess those, those landowners that are benefited by whatever that maintenance or improvement is. So I don't believe the drainage, the Hebron Drainage District has ever been inactive. At least it's been active for the most of the time I've been in the district. But it's been in doing maintenance in areas that would, would have affected district lands. So we probably were not assessed of when those maintenance, when that maintenance was going on because we weren't affected. But, but no, Bill, we have not paid a yearly fee into the drainage district to this point.
Okay, I don't mean to prolong this because there are lots of other issues in front of the board tonight, but at some point, could someone explain to me the $4,089.60 that was also allocated to the conservation district? As, as part of that additional charge, the $17,892 charge that seemed to be going to the Hebron Drainage District, but then was broken down as to who might be responsible for that. And it looked like we were going to pick up another $4,000.
So Bill, the question I think you're asking is the formula. And so I think the drainage district commissioners determined how they were going to distribute. I can't speak to where those fund reserves came from or how they are allocating.
Okay, is it, are they going to come back to us and say, okay, now, you know, you paid eight, but now you owe four more. I mean, I'm just curious how, whatever the mechanism is, it should be understandable. And I'm not sure I understand the bookkeeping. And and so that could be sort of out. I'd appreciate it.
So you're, so you're asking if we spoke, if we're responsible for both.
If we need to write another check.
Yeah, at some point, I mean, maybe at the end of the year, they're going to come by and say, well, okay. You paid eight, but remember you please. Yeah, we have, we need another four and maybe they have reserves of a certain amount and those reserves will be used to defray some of that cost, but we may be seeing an additional charge. I'd just like to.
I do not have an answer on that. So that would be something from the drainage district commissioners to ask what the formula, they sent the invoice. Again, when the invoice first came over and just sent over to Brad Woodson and then went following through and that's where we started looking through. We knew the plan when he was here. And again, it's not just a moving part. So that's what we want to formulate communication channels going forward. That input to the district is to the executive director's office, you know, so it can be shared with the board and directed appropriately. But we can follow up. We have not received any initial information.
And I think all of this can be used just to say that the board is is confused. We support the Hebron Drainage District, but we need something in writing that explains the mechanism of how they operate. And so we understand what our responsibilities are.
I would also, if it's okay, I might echo what those saying too, because I, I mean, trying to contact the district and find out about putting together an MOU, which is fine. And like you said, John, there might be reasons why we don't get to that, but it would also be nice to know why. You know, it's, it's one thing to not agree on something, but to try to contact and not have any answer. I think that's frustrating. It makes our job difficult, you know, which direction to be going. It needs to be a conversation and I think that that would be, and honestly, I think the district would like to, you know, be able to work positively with any other unit of government. So I think we'd be good to know why that wasn't the response. And as they're elected, they're appointed officers, so maybe a member of our board would need to.
Anything else on that subject?
Having a conversation, but where are we? Are we going to come back and hold at this point till the conversation and come back in a future meeting to discuss payments? So at this point, it's just.
Well.
What direction are you giving us?
So we can't hold, but I, I would, I would say pay it. I would say pay it.
Well, I'm comfortable with paying it as long as we keep pursuing.
We're going to have.
Getting an explanation.
Right. As long as we have a conversation going forward, but I can't personally assign an MOU if there's something that they don't agree with, that's something we want everyone wanting to remove.
Well, not only that, there's a lot of state law that is over that and so maybe MOU wasn't.
A lot of those. They may feel the state law says this, we may say it says this and without going to court, we may not get any on that. We don't want to go there.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, I think we, we have enough stature that we should be able to find out at least why they didn't sign the MOU.
That will be a problem.
And, and if there is some greater legal authority that rules these things, then we'll know about it and then we'll have to figure out, well, okay, we have to adapt to that. But to be ignored and then Bill doesn't.
I don't think it was, was complete ignoring either, though. I think there was some conversation from what I gather between staff and, and the board. And so maybe that wasn't.
You know, the point is, from my point of view, is that, you know, everyone, we all have own conversations. But if there's no written record.
Sure.
Of, okay, we agree to this, you said this, I said that, this is where it's at. Then when you go back years later, you can't figure out really that someone's.
Plus people are exchanging off the board on the board.
Right. And then let me throw this out. The Von Bergen name was on both sides of this interaction. There was an employee of the district named Von Bergen and obviously the Von Bergen family is involved with the Hebron Drainage District. I mean, getting, you know, a long distance away and looking at a transaction that involves people in the same family. Even if money is not changing hands, raises some type of potential for tangling or the interpretation, the misinterpretation of tangling. When John, when anything comes up involving something that John's extended family is involved with, he accuses himself. I'm sure this is harmless. But I think it's, you know, we're, we're supposed to be diagnosing and crossing things and following process. And there were some things here that look to me like unintentional lapses. And that's all, you know.
And that's why I think elevating it to the executive director's office, which is particularly with, you know, some local governments, that things are being addressed, we're taking care of, we're getting to the right parties, et cetera. So I think the meeting with the board member and myself with the drainage district commissioners on her own, we wish to do that, we could work through and I'm confident, you know, keeping Ed in the loop. That's on the ground with, you know. Yeah, I think to move forward.
Right, okay, so, all right, so we have a consensus to pay. And we want to work on getting that MOU or to find out why that and what has happened inside or so I took, used to author visit with them with that MOU and say, what do you like about this? All right, thank you, everyone. Lion Prairie, Lions Prairie Nature Preserve, Fox River Peninsula.
Ed, I'm going to let you keep going here.
Okay. As it noted in the board summary, staff was, was tasked with reviewing the erosion problems at the Lions Prairie and Marsh Peninsula at the close of 2021. And we spent several months going through records, contacting the appropriate agencies that would be involved in regulatory permits for it, investigating some funding options in terms of where we might be able to pick up some grant funding to assist with this type of project. And really trying to come up with some options, some general ones about how to approach it. And I believe staff has taken it as far as we can. There are a number of options you could look at. One is no action, which is always an option whenever you're looking at this type of thing, all the way to a complete rebuild of the original boundaries of the Lions Peninsula based on the 1939 air photo. Typically, we would handle all of this in staff with perhaps a little bit of outside engineering, but this is not a typical project. Lions, the Lions project is, is large in size and scope. It is inaccessible to the type of equipment that the district owns for doing wetland projects. It's likely to carry a high price tag. Its location is a little problematical. The site is actually located in Lake County, but owned by the McHenry County Conservation District. So it crosses inter-county regulatory jurisdictions and has high recreational use in the Fox River. So staff would like to put together an RFP and put out a request for proposals to engineering firms and consultants to actually come up with price tags and, and what options would cost to bring back to the board. And that's why what we're asking you for tonight to allow us to develop that RFP, bring it back to you in March for your review in terms of whether the scope is what you'd like. And then to place that RFP out. We gave you what we believe would be a reasonable timeframe for that. Hopefully those options and the prices associated with them would be back before you in early fall. And you could make a decision at that point whether to move forward with a particular option or not. So that's our request for, for this evening, for you to discuss that and determine if you would like us to develop that RFP and, and let it and try to get some specific engineering and cost options in front of you in September.
Go ahead, Pat.
I assume you're talking for a request for proposal?
Yes.
Are there, are there many firms that are going to be interested in this if they don't feel that we have the wherewithal to go forward on this?
Yeah, this would be more of a, a planning and options document. And there's a half a dozen consulting firms in the region that work on these kinds of things that would take that part on. Once that, once you determine an option and determine a price that is reasonable for the, the district to pursue, it's a different set of contractors that we would be working with for the implementation. So I do believe we would, we would get hopefully two to four requests back and we would be able to select from one of those and make a recommendation to the board.
So, um, so yeah, I think to your question, maybe to my question, so there's not really, there's no cost for the RFP. You're just asking people to come back and come up with some options?
Well, what we, what we would be asking them for is to submit a proposal that would include the cost of developing those options. So the RFP, it's, the RFP itself is not going to cost anything for us to solicit other than the, the cost of putting, you know, a formal RFP out there and the advertising. We would then have to select which company or which consultant firm you would want to go with to actually execute what they have put forward in the RFP and that's where the cost would come in. And that's why you, yeah, you don't see a cost estimate in there other than the advertising because we don't have those costs at this time.
Correct. So then with design built, when we get, would, would there be the option of going with the same person who puts out the proposal in the first place? Or is that not really something that would happen in this case?
You know, I don't think it's what we're tackling initially, although some of these firms do this type of consulting and planning and also do implementation. So you may very well wind up with a firm that is, is a complete one stop shop.
Well, I think it's reasonable. I mean, excuse me. You know, I mean, I don't, I certainly don't object to getting information about options and then then you decide, well, what, it's been involved some political interaction with Lake County and potentially with the member controls the Fox River, what the post card or the habit or, or, you know, Vladimir Putin, I don't know. It's not to grant, but you're, you're asking for ideas.
Yeah, we do know, we do know we will have at least four permits that we have to work through on this particular project if it moves forward. Four, there are four different jurisdictions that have a say in what goes on there.
And once you get some of the proposals and options and we have an opportunity to bring everybody together, then there are also, once you see those costs, right, what are the funding actions? Are there grants, other ways, right, to help share in this process? But until we know what we're solving for, one is just present, you know, fix it. And I, and it may not be, it's complicated. So that's the best approach to look and determine what's the best solution, short term, long term.
And what agencies are those for?
The Army Corps will certainly have a say in it. Division of Water Resources at IDNR. I, I believe this will be Lake County Stormwater because it's in Lake County and not McHenry County Stormwater. At least that's what I've been told by McHenry County. And the Illinois Nature Preserves Commission because it's a state nature preserve. So each of those four entities will have to weigh in and sign off on whatever permit are going to be required based on the type of work we're doing. There, there may be others as well, but those four for sure.
Is this request still going to take you a long time to put together or?
Well, we think, we think we can put it together in about two weeks in time for the next board meeting for you to review. That's, that is partly because we've done a lot of footwork and homework over the. That's, that is partly because we've done a lot of footwork and homework over the past two or three months. Of of looking at this and we put a lot of information together that we can use in the R F P.
Anyone else with a question? Thank you, Ed. Let's take you, go ahead here.
Consensus?
Well, I. I haven't seen anybody say.
So another, other board business, we placed for Tuesday night, an actionable item to prepare this and to do that process. But well, instead of normally just, we would just let it, we're coming back to you in March to kind of see what we're scoping on.
Hey, brings us to six four Glacial Park Structures demolition.
It's going to go to John Kramer, our Director of Architecture and Planning and Public Safety.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm going to cover a few items here. First, I'm going to give you folks a quick. A review of, you know, where we are and how we've gotten to tonight, you know, the the process that we've gone through. I'm going to chat, have Elizabeth pull up a map. If you could pull that up now, Elizabeth, that would be great. And we'll go through some of the. How it lays out in the park, so you can see that. Then we're going to talk about the numbers, a little bit, the cost estimates and things like that, that. It was quite of, quite a suitcase to unpack down there in the valley. So. And we did share that with you last, last time we spoke about this. And then finally, we're going to get to the point of. What it is that we need to cover or we need the board's consent to to move forward on. So. Elizabeth, do you need me to share a screen or?
I'm looking for the photo here, so let me see if I can find it. I've got. Let's see if this works.
While she's doing that, I'll give a quick review of where we've been. You may remember, it was a little over a year ago that, you know, we had a little extra snow loading on a building in Glacial Park called the Football Building. We use it as a cold storage facility. It's a very large building, football building. It was named that because it's roughly the size and shape of a football field. So we, with that, with that, we immediately got into mode of, well, we need to, you know, do some demo of this. We had a demo of this building. So we scoped out a project that involved three different buildings, one being the field station. One being the intern house, which is next to the football building or near the football building, and then, of course, the football building. So that was kind of how we were moving forward. And as we got into the project, and I think we reported this in the fall. We realized that it was, you know, it was, it was a bowl of spaghetti. There were lots of different things all tied to one another, utilities tied in here and tied in there, water lines tied in here and tied in there. All of those buildings in the valley are really tied together. So in that, at that point in time, we said, look, we need to really unpack the suitcase and look at what, what, what it is, because right now, you know, to really get sound cost estimates, we've got to do that. So that's the last time we reported. We've had time now to go through and unpack this and and now to repack it into a. A process or a way to move the project forward. So that's what we'll be talking about tonight. By way of the the image that's in front of you here, that's actually Glacial Park, and I want to direct you to a couple of things that I think are important to know. First of all, on the very right side of that image is a road going north and south. That's Route 31. And then the intersecting road with that that goes east west there, that's Harts Road. So as you come into Glacial Park, that's the road that you take when you come into the park. That'll kind of get you oriented a little bit. You come to the end of the road on the very west side of that and you take a right and then it goes into Lost Valley Visitor Center. Most of us know where that is. And Lost Valley is in the very northwest corner of this image. And north of that, you'll see four buildings that are all labeled there. One is the football building itself, and then next to that and attached to it is the Region One Shop. And then to the left or west of that, you'll see the intern residence and north of that, you'll see the White Barn. Those are, two of those buildings are scheduled to come down, and that is the football building and that intern house. The Region One Shop is where we operate. We have a couple of rangers that operate out of there and do the maintenance for this region of the county. Now, I'm going to direct you directly south of that. Of course, you pass over the Lost Valley Visitor Center, pass over the Kettle Marsh, that that's that. Dark circle there and down at the bottom there, you'll see the field station. That's the, that was the former research field station before it moved to a Lost Valley Visitor Center about 10 to 12 years ago. And it has been unused since then. So that's the third building that is scheduled to be demolished. Now, the last place I'm going to direct your attention is back to that intersection of Harts Road and Route 31. And the very northwest section of that, you'll see the Climis, the metal clad barn. That is a barn that was part of the Climis Farmstead that we will talk about later, the concept of possibly moving a shop to. So I think that's all that's important about this, that this image just kind of gets you guys a geospatial approach to it. Now, Elizabeth, could you pull up the? The the document that actually has the cost analysis in it? And when I say cost analysis, I want to preface everything with. These are estimates based on our experience and the experience we've had with recent projects. But they're, they're all what what we call, you know, the the estimate of probable costs. We won't know actual costs on these things until bids are in. That's what really sets the cost. But right now, this is, this is our, our estimations. And they're based on the experience that we've had with other projects or similar, similar type endeavors we've done. First of all, I want to talk about the demolition of the of the three buildings. This was the original scope of the project. The football building was the one that was damaged with the snow. The intern house is right next to it and is in need of significant repairs, so we put that one on the demo list. And then we added the third one of the field station in there. Total cost of that, at this point in time, our estimate is $204,000. That's the first grouping of numbers. Item number two there is a feasibility study. When we did discuss this with you a few months ago, and I said it was a, there were lots of, lots of strands of spaghetti in this one. One of those strands is that we know that the, the Region One Shop needs or is in in need of some significant repairs. So we thought, well, let's, let's go out and hire a consultant. To take a look at this Climis building and and take a look at possible another location for for a shop facility. And determine if, if it's, if, if it's, you know, what would it actually cost to do that? We have some preliminary class, I'll get to those in a little bit. But the, but bringing, you know, getting a feasibility study done will give us much harder numbers, much more solid, reliable numbers than our projections and much more narrow. Range of them as well. Moving on to item number three, that is the capital improvements that we know that are going to be needed at the Region One Shop. The first grouping there, the $195,000, that's roof siding and just utility upgrades. We know that it needs utility upgrades. We know it needs a roof. We know it needs siding. These are all, you know, just the price of having a building. It's, it's. Well, well past its useful life and we've got to go ahead and do these things. That's the first 195. The second. 194,000 is items that would be. Comparing more apples to apples, meaning if we were to relocate the shop. To a larger facility like the Climis building, the metal clad building at the front of Glacial Park. There's a lot more square footage. And it would, there are some things that are, need to be addressed by the, at the shop, you know, like. Solid floor in in the cold storage right now, you know, to help credit proof it and whatnot. So though that second $194,000 would be something we'd be looking at in the next six to 10 years. But that first 195 would be in the next five to 10, or one to five. Those are almost immediate needs that we have to get to. So you can see that we're approaching, you know, that 380,000, 390,000 dollar number for improvements there. So moving on down the page a little bit, one of the things that while we were in the area, we decided to look at is what would it cost to demo? The entire valley area, meaning all of the buildings that are down there, all four buildings. So you add in that $204,000 that we already know with the, with the three buildings. And then you add in the two more and you're getting to the number of, you know, like $346,000 to do that. A number of years ago. Bonnie Leahy, former trustee, many even know her. She, she and I were standing there at the front of Lost Valley and she pointed down and swept her hand across her and said, wouldn't it be great if all of the buildings were gone? Well, we've never lost that thought that has been, that's come up time and time again. It kind of does, you know, put, you know, Mar the view shed there and whatnot. And, you know, some of the building, most of the buildings are unused down there. And so she was just kind of speculating. So. We went ahead and we had planning, go ahead and put together estimates, just so we had them, that information as well. Moving on to number five, the same explanation, these are buildings that are of no use to the district. And we were in the area, they were doing the work anyway, so they went ahead and estimated those demo costs. So we have that at 143,000 and change. So we know that number as well. Lastly, and this is the last cost item, and that is this relocation of the shop concept. We know that Region One Shop has some problems we know there are, we know it's in the flood plain, or at least partially in the flood plain. We know it's on hydric soils, not the best place for a shop to be located. So the concept of moving and plus, we know that it needs some improvements. With all of that, we decided to then do some preliminary estimates of what it would cost to relocate that shop to that Climis Barn. Or indeed, just go ahead and find another location for it. And you can see those cost estimates there. They are, they, they have a large range, you know, one from 500,000 to 782,000. And then the new one from 612,000 on up to, you know, 850. Again, if we were to hire a, do a feasibility study, hire a consultant to do that. Those numbers would be more zeroed in than than our wide range of numbers. So that's the, that's the bad news for this project. And the good news is that we do have some resources that were provided by Paderma. For, to take care of this problem and also possibly give us, help us with a solution. The, the first is the 192,000 that they gave to us, I believe it was November or December, that money came into the district. And it was given to the district. To replace the football building. That's basically what the payment was for. Whether we do it or not is up to us, but that was what the payment was about. The second payment that we anticipate getting from them is it's going to be in the neighborhood of 85,000. And again, that's because they're obligated to pay for the demolition of the football building. So right now, we're, you know, our, our estimated probable cost of that is 85,000. Could be higher, could be lower, but that's basically what Paderma is going to pay. So when you take those two combined, it's 277,000. So we have $277,000 to put toward this project. And the, the budget side of it is that. When we were putting the budget together, and this is staff putting the budget together in basically August and September. We didn't have all of this suitcase unpacked and know all of these costs at that time. In fact, that 150,000 number. Just reflects a list of projects that we decided to hold off doing last year. So we could preserve some resources to demo this, these, these buildings. So in, in a, in a budgetary respect, we're going to have to reallocate the funds to it. We don't have to add funds. I talked with Andy about this and he said, basically, it's a, it's a shift of funds. So it shouldn't be a big issue, but it would be something the board would have to authorize. So with that, basically.
Now, hold up a second, trustee.
Elizabeth, on my screen, I go from one to four.
Okay, let's see here. You can't see it here. All right, I'm going to try something else here.
Hold up mine.
This, I'll move it. It looks like it was fine on my screen. How does that look?
Five is the number they're trying to hide from the bill.
Yeah, I, I do apologize. I didn't know what you were seeing. I could see just, but I did have the other, the document in my hand. Let's see, the relocation of the shop costs, those are the numbers I talked about. Those are some big numbers. And again, there's a wide range there between, you know, 500 and 850,000, depending on what route we we go. This is where I think hiring a consultant to do a feasibility study will help answer a lot of questions for us. And get us zeroed in on what are actual, you know. Harder numbers, more reliable numbers than than our range. We're, we got a big range there and I think we can zero that in. By, you know, there's just so many unknowns when we're, we're working with something like this. And I think by hiring a consultant, we can get rid of a lot of those unknowns. The money side of it, the, the revenue side of it, the 192 in item seven, the 192,000 is already in the bank. That's in the dedicated account. The 85 is what we anticipate getting back from Paderma, once we get the bids in on the, the actual demo costs. So in, in this case, we hope they bid high on the demo cost for the football building and low on everything else. But they're, they're going to go ahead and reimburse us for that. So we're, we're talking about in the neighborhood of $277,000 to do this project, which is tear down three buildings and do that feasibility study. So that's really what we're looking at. Our, our recommendation is that, and what we need from the board is first concurrents to go to bid on demolishing those three buildings. The football building, the intern resident in the field station. And then the second thing is concurrents to go out and seek a request for proposals for. Doing a feasibility study on the Climis Barn and comparing that to what might, it might cost to build a new shop somewhere. So with that said, I guess in in one respect, the good news is. We're getting three buildings torn down. Because one building failed and, and, you know, Paderma is paying for it. The district is not, you know, having to go through. And use its camp money or something like that. And so that is the good news. And we have $53,000 roughly left over to start to address other needs. In this complex. So with that said, John, I'll turn it back to you to, to lead the discussion.
Thank you. Chris has a question.
A question I also want to establish is the estimate for, is the size of the shop going to be 14,400 square feet or is that the parking lot?
Yeah. And that's like $59 a square foot.
I, I believe the building there is 14,400 square feet. I believe that is correct. And Amy, do you have?
You're correct, John. No, you're correct.
Yeah, that's the Climis building.
Okay, that's what we want. And we make that whole building into a shop or parts of it?
I, I think a lot of those, that kind of a question is yet to be answered. I'm assuming it would be, it would be a, you know, combination of cold storage in a shop area.
Correct. It would also have, you know, an, an office space. It would need a restroom. And so they, you know, a few other places to do their herbicide, you know, mixing, things like that, that. It would allow for space for and and make that more efficient.
I guess I'm kind of missing the point of a consultant, don't you?
The consultant. The consultant is so, we don't know, that's a 25 year old plus building that we don't have any plans for. We don't know how the foundation is. plus building that we don't have any plans for. We don't know how the foundation is, if it has one. Um, you know, so it's it's to tell us what condition it's in first. Um and and then based off of that, um it they'll help us say, well, okay. It it's this type of building. Um is it compatible with what we need it to be um for for a shop?
If the board wished to forego reuse of an existing structure and look at costs of just a new campus or a new structure, I mean, that would be one way, but someone would still need to put some of those concepts together.
Obviously, that's just an old pole building that does not have a foundation. I know, I never.
Right. So then the the architect would again tell us and what the utilities are there so that we don't have to guess. Um and and they would then be able to give us prices for whatever we would need. And again, we would then be able to compare whether that made sense and we could compare it to the existing building and the improvements that are needed, just so that we have all the the numbers. Um you know, basically in the same place to be able to move forward with the best decision on where best to spend our money.
And Amy, was I correct in John too, when we talked about this with potentially the Build Illinois funding? Something like this, we would need some type of plans or activity, we would have been some funding source, right, as an option?
Yes, absolutely. So that that is, that was, you know, our top priority project potentially um that we put forward, what that you sent on to Senator Wilcox.
Well. You got a bid for to take down three buildings and then I would definitely want to pursue taking down the the current shop because uh you show a hundred and eighty-nine thousand or whatever the number is to put a new roof on it and whatever else needs to be done with it and then be told that five or six, we'd like to take it down. I maybe or ten years, I can't see putting a hundred and ninety thousand dollars into a building that's we we don't want. So I I think that shop has to go somewhere. It's in a bad spot. So it's an old building, needs money to be spent on it. I can't see leaving. Hey, the rest of the board doesn't agree with me, but I would never put a hundred and ninety thousand dollars into a building that I own if I'm gonna tear it down in several years.
I think it would be good to get the building cleared out of there to to see what the options are closer to thirty at the climate.
Is that a good location for that type of structure that we wanted, the shop and the office and stuff like that? Do you want to be that close to thirty-one? I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out.
You know, the thing, I I don't know, because I was actually thinking it would be a a good place for it, because it's digging on the road easier than having to go into the interior of the uh of the property. But then again, I hope that primarily services Glacial Park or that it is. And so may Ed or John can answer that, but my first thought was it would be better, but now that I'm thinking about it.
It 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 is a a better location. A lot of the of a lot of the uh parks that they uh work on and work in are are north and east of this one. So therefore, uh getting them out of the center of Glacial Park is an advantage. There are a couple that they have to go, like Harrison Benwell is the other direction, but it's almost when you get out there on thirty-one, it's almost six, one way half a dozen another uh to get too quickly. So I think it's a better location.
The follow-up on the idea of demolishing the current shop. Well, then obviously, you need a a temporary shop or a new shop. You know. So if you're demolishing the football building and the intern building and while you're while you have the excavator there, you're gonna take down the old shop. How much time would it take to put a temporary shop into the climate building that, you know, is uh Chris says is probably just a pole building? I mean, is there? Are you simultaneously gonna be demolishing building a new shop on that location prior to demolishing the existing shop?
You might wanna look at doing one first.
Right, right. Have your new shop ready when you take down the old one. So have you thought the sequencing of this, John?
Yes, uh what we would do is we would, we're not proposing tearing down the region one shop in this, in this round. Uh we would tear down the football building. We would tear down the intern house and we would tear down the research field station. And then that would allow us the time to do the analysis to find another location for that shop so that if we, you know, we have uh we have the uh consultant give us a hand, figure this out, give us these good hard numbers and uh then we would be able to make an informed decision as to where to relocate it, if we relocate it or if we stick money into it. I mean, that's a a future board's decision. Uh but uh yeah, sequencing it would be very important to make sure that we have a place for them to land first uh before we took uh away their current facility.
As I understand it though, John, uh when you go to take down these other buildings, do do you have to reroute some like electrical and plumbing or whatever from from those because the the shop is still gonna be standing?
Yes.
That is correct.
That is correct. And and the uh rerouting uh in talking with Amy and 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 Sarah about it and planning both of them. We've we've put a um, it it's it's Band-Aids on things. It's it's patches, it's things like that we, you know, that we can do. Um you know, not high dollar uh costs, but um just to get us by until we can make uh, you know, better and informed decisions.
Many dollars.
And it's it's include, it's included in that two oh four.
So two oh four gets us the buildings down and stabilizes without any improvements. It takes care of where, that's where this whole conversation came up. How much of the two oh four is for the utility?
Um less than fifteen thousand. Sarah, if you, I, yeah, again, it's an estimate. But yes, it's less than fifteen thousand for all three buildings.
We want to get it right. So if that stabilizes, it's a certain amount of money. And it gives us time to figure out where we want to go. We we don't want to stop and leave. So I I think it's efficient to incorporate.
Don't question, but I'll ask you anyway. Is, do they have capacity to like combine this with another shop somewhere else?
Well, my question would be, is it even for a year or two, they worked out another shop and just took everything out at once and then?
I mean. Do they, do they need this?
So talk about the region that closed shops to this, because that is a real good question. Really, like when we did here, we moved into a temporary campus over at Baxter Woodman and got built out and we did some temporary staging. So talk the layout about where our regional shops are, the closest proximity to do something temporarily and and what that would look like or how that would impact operations, if it would or would not.
Yeah, there are, we have six, six shops, six regional shops uh that all take care of park maintenance. Um there's, there's one in Harvard, uh one at Coral Woods near Maringo. Uh and then uh Glacial Park has one. And the other three are all down in uh the, we call them region four fifty-six. It's all in the southeast part of the county. And that's because there's a lot of sites down there, uh you know, there's smaller sites, but a lot of them there. The Glacial Park, the region one, actually has the highest um demand on them in terms of the the amount of uh s- staff hours that it takes to operate what they do. We did think about, you know, temporary relocation, how would it work, you know, and and we just, you know, Pat, to your question, we really don't have another facility that we can push them into, um you know, even temporarily. They they're they're kind of the hub of uh a a lot of i- in fact, a lot of things get stored at their shop that don't belong to them. Uh there's uh things for Lost Valley get stored there. Um there used to be a lot of things for education there. And I know that during uh burn seasons and things like that, natural resources will use that shop to keep trucks inside in, you know, in a heated environment uh during uh during the evening. So it's it's um it's pretty critical location because of the amount of demand that they have in that region.
Phil has a question.
Well, I'm sure you've considered all the permutations on this. But I'll throw this up. If you decide that within five or ten years, we're gonna need a new shop. And you're looking at the climate corner there for this new shop. Is there, uh, does it make sense or look at the option of build yourself a state-of-the-art shop? That takes a year, it takes a year. Delay the demolition during that time. Continue to use the current shop, board up the other buildings. And then when the new shop is useful and might be useful in stages, but at some point in time, then you do all the demolition in the valley that needs to be done. And then you're not relocating utilities and and staging a demolition there. So, I mean.
No, I think that's a question when I, after the delay of utilities, which was where we paused before the holidays to kind of figure this out. I did have a conversation with Paderma and one of the things, that's why we went through the boarding it up, because they issued that, they want the building down because of the safety and the liability of that. So they would have to agree to that. Um this other bigger, larger complex really is in their concern. I mean, their concern is, let's get the structure on the ground. Um and so I would be, you know, they would have to, and I I just don't know. It doesn't hurt to ask, but.
In the sense that that football building is sort of isolated, it's not like it's in a neighborhood with children playing and, you know, where you'd say it's a an attractive hazard. I don't. They might, might be able to present a case that uh would say that you could isolate that space. Well, I'm just saying, you might make that argument for them, if you wish to.
Right. Well, we temporarily, when I, when I did uh have this conversation, you know, they definitely wanted to report back and I gave them the timeline. Um so I'm not saying that it's out of question. It's a conversation to be had. Um I do think that liability or what there would be that would transfer, if there was a situation, they may just be hands off. And it's not to the risk pool because it is a liability, right?
Say, go ahead and do it that way, but we're not gonna, sure.
Anything happens to anybody there, it's on you. But I do think the idea, you know, and that's gonna come up in the process, like when you go with the state of the art, something that's gonna last for a long time, I think that that's still gonna be quite a consideration, I think, it's great. And um so so the fifteen thousand beyond what I see, and of course, there is the scale of economy to have everything down at one time and mobilization and that is not available, but we haven't figured out the total. This is all looking one step at a time with a little bit longer lens to identify. But for what I'm hearing is that the cost has been paid for to get the buildings down. It's that fifteen thousand dollar to buy us a little time and then this feasibility study. And so the question is does the board have an interest in supporting a feasibility study? The staff is saying that's the best way to assess existing structure. Even if you were to say, you know, we're not interested in taking an old existing structure and repurposing it. But we've done a lot of our buildings that way and do something new, then we'll go that cost and just focus on a cost to what is a cost to do something new. You're still gonna have demolition, but it's just how you spend your dollars. And Amy and John, if you have any thought on that, um you would need to assess climate if if you were not, if you were just go for new and not consider that as an option.
Yeah, the the um, the the costs uh of a of a consultant would be unavoidable if we were going to just say, f- forget about climate um and and, you know, decide to build a new shop facility somewhere. Um that, you know, we would have to start with, you know, some sort of consultant to help us, you know. You know, plan it and put it together and, you know, art could design it and all of those things. Uh so that's an unavoidable cost. The, when when I saw the fifteen thousand dollar number and realized that that, I was like that, okay, that's not a high price to pay to buy us a year and the time to do, you know, uh an analysis. Um, you know, if it had been a lot more than that, I would have, I would have said, whoa, let's let's look at this a little differently, but I didn't think it was tremendously high for that purpose. Um at the end of the day, what we're really looking at is we started a project to tear down three buildings. Um and, you know, we've gotten the money to do those three buildings, just hand it to us. Um and so we're, we're lucky in that respect. And, you know, this other wrinkle uh is an opportunity. And I think if we just, you know, spend the extra twenty thousand dollars and and explore that, then we'll we'll have some answers. Um with without, and of course, economy of scale, I mean, yeah. Uh you know, if if we could tear down all of those buildings in the valley at the same time, that would be ideal. But we're not operating under ideal conditions anymore. Um we don't have those kinds of resources.
John, if I, if I could add, I I um, I just wanted to let, make sure that you all knew that the cost of um a consultant for an architect um is already built into that larger number of that new new build. So within that range, it did include you know, a percentage um for architecture, engineering, MEP. So it's in there already. It's, it wouldn't be additional. And then my, I have to correct myself, the um utility cost um i- is for three items. It's for electric sewer and water that need to be um band-aided or, you know, reconnected down there. I think I said three buildings and I didn't mean to. It was, there is three different utilities that that money goes towards.
Have abatement as well.
We do have abatement. Abatement um is a higher cost. Obviously, there's more to do um and bigger square footage. So, um, yeah.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. The the determination of where we would put a new shop location, is that done in-house or can that be also combined with this consultant we're gonna do, or is that a separate consultant, or how does that work?
No, it would be done at the same time. We have in-house. Um and again, the number for even the consulting is down because of the staff that we have um with with Sarah and myself. So yes, we would want to evaluate, maybe that, maybe there is a better location. Um but it would be done at the same time.
Oh, that's good to know that you you'll take on that. Um how old is that climate building?
I think Sarah tried to do some research on that. Um so Sarah is on, I I think we we knew that we couldn't see it past twenty-five years, but Sarah, maybe you know better.
Is Sarah muted?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it is uh, it's twenty-five years old, roughly.
Okay, thank you. I'm just questioning how the roof may be. Yeah, the posts might be starting to rot off, the the roof might be bad. And you're talking about a twenty-five-year-old building. There's gonna be some money spent on that one too, just to get it.
And that, that that uh estimate is in that cost. And that, that that estimate is in that cost as well, right, for a new, for a new roof.
Roof, uh, new policy.
Scudders siding.
Actually, we have a lot of buildings and not a lot of uh, anything that's.
Well, and that was really the trouble of then finding a suitable place even temporarily. Um, you know, to try to maximize all of this um, at the same time, but there just, there really isn't a a a good option out there.
It looks like. I I guess I'd be interested in if you believe that the climate spot uh, location is the best spot. Of anywhere we have, and if that's the case, then we start to figure out what's the best way to go forward. But I. What we're trying to save it, it it's a big building, so fourteen thousand square feet is a is a large building, but. If if a lot of it needs to be replaced or redone, then we might as well get the correct size in the right location versus just using what we have.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was staff, staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sentiment exactly, which is why we 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 threw that number in there for new build because we're like. Wait a minute, if the climate's building is, has all these problems, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road. Um, and.
And then it's gateway. I mean, not only to the our our iconic location, Leshaw Park, that's where you come in. And so that's why I think the assessment is that the best location convenience, yes, to thirty-one. But is that, do you want that at the front door? And and so it's so.
Well, if it's a good.
If it's state of the art, like Bill is gonna be um, helping us build, then yeah, we, it'd be a great thing to have right up front.
Yeah, I I don't know if I would have said that out loud if I were Bill.
I heard it. I'm gonna keep you to it. Yep.
My answer to that is I don't remember. At least once a week.
All right, well, I, it sounds like an ongoing discussion and we need to find out how fast that football building has to come down for the Dharma's sake and then. But um, I I I think that we can move fairly rapidly on finding at least a location that if that's the right location and. Finding out if that climate building is the right building that uh, remains standing and then uh, then many other decisions I think would fall into place.
Is there a decent ingress and egress on that property? Is there, do we go right out to thirty-one? Or does it go back to?
Well, currently, and Amy can speak to this, right? On Hearts Road, but there was also in the residence off of thirty-one.
Correct. Yeah, so there's, so there's both the one, the one that we use currently, um, you know, for our shop or for the needs there. Um, is is the one that's off of Hearts. At thirty-one, I think everybody knows there is a little bit of challenge to come straight out of the topography and the line of sight. From where the existing um, house, you know, little drive, but we'll look at all of it. Um. You know, that that intersection.
If they have plans on thirty-one, if access to need to do a, you know, a pull-off or whatever you call it.
Right in, right out.
You know, just because I get stuck there and it's a busy place.
That's why I think Hearts Road would be better.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're gonna, if they ask you for a turn lane there, then that's. That's very expensive, definitely.
Well, how soon will that go to four months?
I don't know. Well, I think we need to. You know, look at that climate building, see if it's worth uh, changing and or updating and then um. Find if that's the right, and then I I think you, I think if you walk through that building and play, I'm going to answer pretty rapidly on that.
Yes, I think we can um, turn around RFP and and get um, you know, someone out there. Um, you know, within a couple of months, we should be able to have some kind of information.
Amy, I thought you were saying a couple of days.
No, I know I didn't say days. But yeah, you know, we we can, like I said, we can have, um. We can have, it's not, I'm not saying years, we're saying, yeah, we can get this done within, while the same time, we're working on the bidlet um, for the demo and um. Like I said, I don't think it's too far out of the realm of possibility to, you know, be in a good place if we needed to shift gears and, you know, take another look, but it it would be great. Information to have. Um, and yes, we can get that fairly quickly, but not, not by next week.
See, Amy, I'm running out of time here, so.
I know, I hear you. I hear you. We'll do it as quickly as we can. How about?
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, I think we've, anything, anybody have any questions? Staff, any questions for the board or for the staff? Are we good right now?
So next Tuesday, you'll have on the agenda authorization to go forward with the bid. We're reauthorizing it because we had paused it. So we want to communicate, they're going to repackage that out and then solicit proposals for the feasibility study and plans. And those will be the action items in front of court.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you to everyone. Carbon credit, regulation project.
Do you want to share screen, Ed? Do you have a PowerPoint or?
No, I don't. Um, I have two comments though. Uh, you want me to go, you want me to go forward with them? Okay. Before you tonight is a proposal related to the district becoming involved in the carbon credit market. A couple of years ago, we presented an overview of where the district had been on this topic. Over the past decade and really how the carbon markets worked. And at that time. Uh, the carbon markets were really not very active, partly because of the pandemic and partly because uh, the United States had pulled out of the Paris Accords. We're back in the accords, pandemic appears to be subsiding and the carbon market is starting to pick up again. And we were directed at that time as staff to keep an eye on it. And if anything looked like it might be relevant to the district's involvement to bring it forward for the board to discuss. And I believe we have the potential for something that could be relevant to the district. Dipping its toe in the carbon market, so to speak. I had just remind you very quickly how carbon works. There are really two kinds of options. One is carbon trading, which uh, we're not recommending we get involved in. That market is not fully developed. But there's also voluntary uh, carbon offsets. Where individuals or or corporations will work to offset the amount of carbon they produce in their daily operations or daily life. Um, by either doing reforestation or or setting aside tracks of um, of natural lands that are absorbing carbon. But recently had a conversation with um, two partners that we work with quite frequently, the Morton Arboretum. And the Chicago Regional Trees Initiative. And the third group involved in that was a nonprofit organization called City Forest Credits. And City Forest Credits was organized specifically to try to work. To establish off voluntary offset credit purchases for carbon in areas that are classified as urban slash suburban. And that are under threat of imminent development. And the rationale behind that is that in these areas, development is more likely to remove old growth stands. Of trees which already have carbon locked up in them. And when that happens, that carbon is released back into the environment. Uh, but if those areas can be preserved, then the carbon remains locked in the vegetation. So it was a good conversation. We had a couple of meetings with City Forest Credits. This is not the first time they've done it in the region. Um, they had a smaller pilot program a couple of years ago that. One of our other partners, Lake County Forest Preserve was involved in. Uh, and they were able to sell a few carbon credits kind of as a sort of a a test run. So there are, there are two types of projects that we could become involved with. And actually, one project could encompass both of these options. So there is a possibility of preserving an area of older growth forest. In our case, that would be oaks, which is what. The district has been working with for many decades. And be able to receive through sales, carbon offset sales. A credit for keeping those trees intact for a minimum of forty years. We could also, if the piece of property had open areas in it that needed reforesting. We could uh, sell the credits for the new trees that we were planting on into the next forty years. So there are two types of ways that we could become involved. Uh, to work with a a carbon group like City Forest Credits. Would involve some fees that the district would need to pay to become part of the the carbon registry. Uh, validation fees, uh, so that the growth of the trees and the amount of carbon they're locking up could be checked every three to four years. There are some fees for setting up an account and some transaction fees when you sell carbon credits. Um, we're not, we're not recommending what those fees are right now or the district paying them. What we're really looking at is seeing if the board would be interested in us pursuing a pilot carbon project. With carbon uh, with City Forest Credits. We would not become involved in it, of course, till the board would approve it, but we'd like to develop the parameters. For such a project, where it might be, how many acres it might entail, what kind of uh, income the district might receive over forty years. From those carbon offset credits. And uh, bring it back to the board to take a look at and see if they would like us to go forward into a more formal arrangement. City Forest Credits is currently uh, working with with other agencies in the area to set up. Another carbon bank, so to speak, uh, where credits would be available. Uh, to to purchase that would involve old growth trees. Uh, but they're not very far along on that second project. And uh, we really would like to see if the, if the board would like to discuss us investigating whether this would be an option going forward. So that kind of gives you the nuts and bolts. I included a lot of the information that uh, City Forest Credits provided. On how they do their operation. Uh, it's in your packet there. I'll I'll do my best to answer questions. Uh, about what might be involved. It is a new thing for for the district, but it could result. Not only in preservation of of some older oak groves that we've been working to preserve over the years, but. Also start to create a steady income over the next forty years off those properties for doing the work that we do now. Which is managing those woodlands. So that's sort of the presentation in a nutshell and no pun intended there. And I will be happy to answer any questions you might have. But the the, to the best I can.
I have a question. So most of these woodlands you're looking at are older trees and probably oak trees?
Yes.
What I, you know, oak's got that, well, so what happens if you sign up this stuff and then you start losing trees?
Yeah, that's a great question and something I've I've asked uh, City Forest uh, Credits about. And something I would investigate further to bring back to uh, the board in any kind of pilot project. Uh, the carbon remains, even though the tree is dead. It will, of course, slowly be released to the atmosphere as it, as the tree rots. Uh, the big concern with with oak removal would be the the burning. Uh, of or creation of fuel out of those oaks if they were to go down. So from what I've been able to gather is you have to have a plan for tree replacement. If you start to lose some of the old, these oaks. The good news is uh, that there's some new information has come out. Uh, just recently and and I believe some of you may have have uh, had time to read the article. That was sent this afternoon, right after I got it. On the value of older trees in terms of carbon sequestration. And uh, it would appear that that older trees really sequester far more carbon. Than they were being credit, given, given credit for, and they really pick up their pace on on carbon sequestration after age seventy-five. So some of these oak groves that we have have probably locked away a lot of carbon, but. Uh, it's a great question, Pat, and I would bring back as many, as much of a detailed answer as I could as we developed this kind of project. But it's it's certainly a concern. And I believe we would have to have a replanting plan if we lost. Large swaths of of trees in any one of these projects.
Is there, or I, is there any interest in this? And I, I sort of.
Yeah, I wish you the best.
I I do have a question though. Um, if part of it is because of um. The developmental pressure and wanting to make sure that those trees don't, you know, get taken down because of development. If they're already on, and I don't know what happened in Lake County, but if it's already on land that has no will. Threat of development, development, how are they, how does that get worked in or what is the terminology that's they use to go ahead and justify? The program, or is it more because of the cost that goes into maintaining them? So that they don't, we don't lose them? I mean, what it was, that plane?
Yeah, those are, that's a great question too. And and I asked about that as well. So to qualify to be one of these, these, I put it in quotes here, urban areas. In our case, we have to be an area that's covered by a regional uh, planning commission. And because we're, we're covered by um, CMAP. Uh, we qualify as that. And also because of McHenry County's location and. Uh, juxtaposition to Milwaukee and to Chicago, we qualify as an area under threat of development. So we could not present properties that the district has preserved uh, currently. And and present them forward as a carbon project. But properties that have been preserved in the past two years. Or properties that we might purchase in the future, as long as they have old growth forest on would qualify. So there's about a two-year window for what has already been protected that would qualify and going forward. If we had the right project and and the carbon market uh, turns out to be what it sounds like it could be with this particular approach. Then each time the district preserved old growth woods, we might be able to enter those into the carbon registry. So any one project may only net you a few thousand dollars a year. But if you multiply that over a decade or two of preservation and oaks are. Have always been a primary preservation target for the district. You could establish a a long-term income over the next forty years. From several of these projects that would come about as the natural course of what we do as an open space agency. So yeah, you do, you do have to agree to keep those trees preserved for forty years. And that would include management as well. You can't, as Pat pointed out, if the entire stand dies, you need to replace that stand.
Bill has a question.
So for conversation, the purchase of Camp Lakota, would those trees potentially? Could they be placed into this program?
Absolutely, they would, they would qualify.
I think everybody's very interested, Ed.
Yep, um, I will, we will, we will put together something and hopefully get it back to you uh, for the next board meeting or the one after that. If that's your directive to us.
Sounds good. Thank you. Hey, uh, that executive director's report, please.
All right, I do think they want to update you this evening. One is paddle the fish. Um, and uh, just I may have shared with you prior, paddle the fish is now joined with the environmental defenders in McHenry County. And it's considered a program up there. So that was one of our requests that they did find the sponsor. To be able to facilitate so the district then could work on some type of an agreement. Um, and to provide license to do the maintenance work along the Fishwaki River. Um, we did meet. Uh, had a conversation with Pat Loder and Tammy Sava. Um, and letting them know that it was our intent to work on a license agreement. Working on that and we should hopefully have something back to this board to review. Uh, hopefully in March, if all goes well. And so that would be for the maintenance. They also. Had put together a larger plan where they're looking to have access for paddles and other types of activities, research. And we would handle that after discussion. That would be a special use permit like we do with other groups. So specifically. We'll give the language, get the insurance coverage and get that all drafted for review. And that way, um, hopefully by by May, they can be hitting the river and doing what they need to do to to do. So that's proposed. Now they continue uh, with their thoughts and ideas uh, to have stretch goals. Of of looking for phase two, and we're just on phase one. And um, we did offer uh, for them, they were looking at pursuing some potential grants. They have been unsuccessful. In grants uh, to look, they even look to to go to McHenry County to get some of the American Rescue Plan funds, which. Are not available for them to do this type of work, but uh, so. are not available for them to do this type of work. But, uh, so our staff will be willing to meet with them and just talk about some possibilities uh, that could be pursued, uh, down the road in the future. Um, and, uh, so we'll keep those dialogues open. But I just want to give an update that we are working on that since it's been a while. Um, and, uh, I think it'll be a good, uh, partnership that we could do to go, uh, through the way that we're going about it. Any questions? The other is the Epic Week four twenty and, uh, Pedro Campbell and Justin Gate, you had met with us when we were with the county talking about render west, Donald Engineering, uh, back, uh, last year. And so we have requested that they vacate, um, the area that goes through Blige Park, since they've determined that that is not going to be the path uh, for future planning. And, um, we had met, uh, and so we have a meeting to go in front of the Transportation Committee, uh, next week on the twenty-third. I sent correspondence for you and receiving the communication. What we're asking for is that the Transportation Committee and the County Board, um, support our efforts with a letter to our legislators, to the state, to have the area that's in Blige Park. And so when your board back, you have a map of what that way is. Anybody that's interested in joining us next, um, Wednesday, uh, for that presentation, we'd love to have you there. As we've done on the five days for that support. Um, clearly, transportation, um, the corridor part exceeds where the district's property is. But I think at least if we could get a property that is, uh, involved in, in conservation district land and get that protected, that would be great.
Any questions? Okay. With that, is there anyone have any other business they'd like to discuss tonight? If nothing from the board, then I will ask for public comments too. Is there anybody from the public out there? Stephanie?
Uh, it's Wendy. Um, I see nothing.
All right, Wendy.
It's okay.
Okay, so there's nothing there. Uh, then we are ready to make the motion. You want the executive session? Bill will make motion, um, pursuant to, to C one personnel, to C two-five lease purchase of real estate and to C two-one review of close session minutes and the open meetings act, uh, by, uh, CS. And, um, that, that's the motion. Is there a second? Wendy has a second. Uh, please call a roll.
Tracy Thomas, yes. Tracy Beaton?
Yes.
Tracy Brooks?
Yes.
Chris Don?
Yes.
Chris Campbell?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. We are now going into executive session. Uh, we'll, we'll take this. Anybody can, we'll have a break, a few minute break, and then, um, whenever he gets logged back in, we'll be in executive session, uh, with no action after. There might be some discussion afterwards, but there won't be any, we can't take any action during this meeting. So, Rhett, thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're now at eight thirty-five PM, we're back.
Okay, we're back in session. Uh, Megan will need to call the roll. Yes.
Chris Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, so we're in session.
This is Lynn last name.
I was gonna say Lynn, do you wanna make any comments?
Oh, yeah.
You wanna make a comment another night or what, what, what's your wishes?
Yeah, I know, we can do it another time.
Okay, you'd like to do it another time. Okay. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Uh, Chris, right here, we're right here. We got a second. Okay, Chris has the motion, raise the second, uh, roll call, please.
Tracy Prince?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we are adjourned.
Good luck, and enjoy. I will, I might tune in, um, but I, I will.